Any other questions? Thank you. Well, an amendment to the council budget funds. If you would like to take out your camera. May I ask and remind you that your camera is directed into the chamber and not into the public gallery. We now look at a general item six. And we go to one special expenses paid in nineteen eighteen. The budget of two thousand thirteen fourteen beyond paid in nineteen to one hundred sixty-two. The capital programme and treasury management strategy space two thousand thirteen fourteen. Paid in one hundred sixty-three to one hundred and eighty-four. Six, ninety-three, the budget two thousand thirteen fourteen beyond ninety-four and ninety-five. And treasury management strategy space for two thousand thirteen fourteen. Other cabinet halls are referred with one hundred and eighty-seven, the one of ninety-two. Council markets.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I knew you were going to be doing so. I also would like to point out that in the council tax revision on the budget, the budget figure that is quoted in paragraph three point three is a hundred and forty million, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred, which should be a hundred and forty-eight million thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and correct period and provide in the balance too. I also would like to know if I can also remember the budget council.
I second this, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Our council happy to accept it, Mr Mayor. What a favour. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I rise to present what is probably one of the most challenging budgets that any Swindon finance member has had to oversee in many decades. Before proceeding, I would like to pay tribute to the hard work of the finance team, the staff across the council, members of this chamber and members of the public who have contributed to building this budget together. Despite these challenges, which I will talk to in a minute, this administration is the first budget that not only takes our vulnerable, minimises the impact on frontline services and allows us to continue the work to transform our council. And it does so without increasing the tax version to our residents. For a consecutive year, we are proposing there be no increase in the level of council tax. In developing this budget, we've had to cope with rising demand from the demographic pressures of an aging population, pressure on children's services and the expectation that we as a council will continue to provide board services for all people. These challenges were made all difficult with an awful statement from the government defining our funding that came so late instead of carrying slightly for the city of Denise, it came just before Christmas. When the statement did arrive, despite being the season of goodwill, the headlines were far more aggressive. With the funding for councils such as Swindon further reduced as part of the austerity momentum of the coalition government, now released after they have a fight and have a real impact on council budgets. The coalition government is working to restore fiscal responsibility for the nation's finances. And given this, I believe the challenges for local governments by hand will remain for many years to come. Despite this backdrop, the budget tonight is one that preserves this administration's commitment to protect the vulnerable and promote economic growth. We have developed this budget in public, in the full scrutiny of non-executive members, the media and most importantly, the people of Swindon. It's been important talking tonight about what we have proposed tonight in terms of the funding compression of housing and the risks, the direct result of the consultation for public feedback, we have been given about this being something like change and people will vote for the budget, that's the red feedback. We've had two months of scrutiny. I believe one hundred and forty-eight million net budget that touches the life of two hundred and nine thousand plus residents and many more thousands who work or study here deserves more than a single night's debate in this council chamber. The budget tonight was first published for the candidates' consideration last December. The two thousand thirteen fourteen budget itself does not stand alone. We're also starting to build for the next three to five years. The decisions we recommend to council are based on a strategic approach to boroughs finances rather than to any short-term gain. This year, we've had a number of changes on my board that have had a significant impact on us. The change is the council tax support, in particular the lower level of government rather that being posed now costs on us. The changes to school people funding that do not take into account the large number of schools that have chosen to become academies. And although we can now pay low income to business rates, this doesn't come without significant risks too. In this budget, we have proposed around fifteen million cost savings across the council. This is in addition to the tens of millions that the administration saved over the past few years. Even with these savings, we will still be in a position where a great proportion of our budget will continue to be spent on the most vulnerable, knowledge, childcare and children's services. Our role as a council, I believe, is to secure outcomes by being precise about what it should be and then commissioning the best way to do this with in terms of efficient money use of money. Sometimes these services more than provided by the council, council employees, sometimes by non-profit organisations, sometimes by charity and maybe sometimes for the public sector, private sector. We are supporting local jobs and capital programme, some of which private sector left, like the new oasis. Others will require council control, such as the new car park and people's home for the town centre. Others are necessary simply because of demand, such as new sports across the borough. Despite the fifteen million savings in this budget, the challenge is far from over and similar amounts will we need to save from years to come, from budgets in years to come. No service can be ignored if we are to find more cost-effective, more sustainable proposals to secure the right outcomes of the people of Swindon. On council tax, I'm keenly aware that many residents face fixed or low incomes and that any increase in council tax may be hard to bear. But at the same time, I also mind that if the council is after the sustainable future, we need to make sure that our core funding is adequate and much of that funding comes from local taxes. However, on balance, the Conservative administration believes that at this particular time, we should not be imposing a further burden on the residents of Swindon. And as such, I am proposing a budget that reflects no increase in the level of council tax. This would be the third year in a row of approaching council tax for residents of Swindon. These are the most challenging financial files that local government has known for a generation. I am convinced that this budget takes a strategic approach to protecting the vulnerable and promotes each of our groups now and in the future. I would once again like to offer my sincere thanks to everybody who has been on the project for this budget and additionally those who have taken part in the consultations that have further refined the shape of the budget presented tonight. This budget is not without risk, but I do believe it's the right budget for Swindon. It's a strong and positive budget. I commend this budget to the chairman. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. I deserve my words, Mr Mayor. I admitted to say right at the start of the debate that in addition to the agenda that we have had up to ten minutes, group leaders will also have ten minutes for their own review. Can I call this motion through? Amendment? Amendment?
Yeah, Professor, if you could just clarify, Mr Mayor. We have an amendment to the original budget, but I understand, are we going to take a vote on the administration's amendment to its own budget first? And does that then become the budget?
No, Mr Mayor. The council has agreed that the motion which is before you from the administration has been amended. So when the time comes to vote on the sub-dawn motion, it will depend upon whether there are amendments which have accepted in the meantime and if not, then the Conservative motion will be re-issued.
I trust we all follow that? In which case, Mr Mayor, can I give you some of the amendments for the budget?
Yeah, please.
I'm happy to see you got it down. Thank you, Mr Mayor. The members who are having fun are that the Labour group is tailoring amendment to the administration's budget proposals. Which sets out how proposed customer services for the vulnerable, the young and as well as the hard-working taxpayers of Swindon and Swindon. We on this side of the chamber recognise that tough decisions have to be made by the council in this budget and in future budgets. We need to address the national deficit alongside Conservative Party dogma which reduces the size of the state which driven the coalition government to make unprecedented cuts to Swindon Borough Council's funding. As the Conservative Party local government, Mr Bolneal, made clear in two thousand and ten, as far as the coalition government is concerned, those in greatest need ultimately bear the burden paying off the debt. That is the symptomatic of the philosophy which underlines this budget, which when practically apprised rejects the idea of a bank's bonus but favours the idea of putting tax credit to working families. It's one that rejects the idea of a mansion tax on homes valued above two million pounds but favours the imposition of a bedroom tax on social housing tenants. And one that makes twenty-eight per cent of savings to local government over a four-year period, services which impact on the poor, the elderly and the vulnerable in order to help fund a hundred thousand pounds worth of tax cuts to Britain's fourteen thousand heirs. But if central government cuts all the council had to deal with, that would be bad enough. But these coalition funding cuts are happening whilst Swindon is facing two other challenges of its own. One that is sadly unpreventable, but the other is entirely avoidable. First big challenge, as councillor Edwards has pointed out, is the social care crisis in Swindon. We have an aging population, more people with complex disabilities and needs. The councils face a huge challenge to ensure all these people have the quality of care they deserve. We recognise that the challenge is not the Conservatives making and that other councils to a lesser or greater degree face the same challenge. Next year, there is a projected increase in cost of one point three million because of more children being brought into care. And this week alone, we see that sixteen per cent of children in Swindon are deemed to be designated as being in poverty. The social crisis in Swindon is going to be exacerbated in a few weeks' time when we get the bedroom tax, the council's housing tax benefits changes and the council tax benefit changes all come into play. And what you're going to see there is a rise in homelessness and a rise in child poverty due to the impact that those central government impositions on this council has. The second challenge facing the council is entirely avoidable. I'm referring, of course, to the administration's tracking up of the ninety-two million pound debt after the investment of the Treasury circus for the previous administration. This debt means that next year, the council will have to spend over eight million on managing the council's debts rather than fixing potholes, transporting the elderly and all the other things that are within this budget. As councillor Edwards outlines in the Treasury Management Statement to Cabinet, the council's debt is set to increase by twenty billion year on year until two thousand and sixteen. So we can expect the debt management budget to increase in future years. Labour disagrees with the Conservatives' administration's spending approach to capital spending, which has led to the council paying so much debt. And we would not have borrowed the money on Witschelstone, we would not have borrowed the money on the Union Square car park. Nonetheless, we are where we are. And I think that the debt facing this council is arguably the most important aspect facing this council for this year and in future years. And it faces whatever administration, whatever colour the administration. So I'd like to make an offer now that following this budget, whatever the outcome is, is that we get together a cross-party working group to look at the best way that this council can reduce its debts. How that is made up, I think we can discuss afterwards. But I think that it's imperative that we come together as a council on a similar line, I have to say. We come together on the local plan, on the economic strategy, on the town centre plan. I think if we can get together and try and work together on how we reduce the debt. And I offer that, which we haven't included in our amendment, as I suspect you might vote against the amendment, but you might want to take us up on that offer of the cross-party working group on the debt. So that's the context with which Swindon council administration would have to work. The Labour group doesn't take an Alison Wondland approach as the council leader does Union's thesis position. But we accept these challenges cannot be made overnight, nor in just one budget. But now is the time to make a start. Presently, the administration isn't starting to address these challenges, we don't think. Managing demand is often used by the administration, but too often the administration's approach to council services is, in our view, managing decline. As we have outlined in our amendment, if Labour were in power, we would offer a different set of priorities rather than simply managing the decline of services for council taxpayers. While social care costs will have achieved a rise with aging population and more people with complex disabilities, Labour will mitigate this by building extra supportive housing accommodation which will reduce the number of external care placements that the council would have to commission. This accommodation will provide housing support to the elderly and disabled who are having onsite wardens. They will also be specialised with things like bathrooms so that we can give these people the best opportunity to remain independent. Within the economic developments and skills, Labour would reduce the amount of money we can't spend to provide to poor and Swindon, which in our view isn't delivering the kind of outcomes to justify that spending. And we would use this money to go directly to deliver economic outcomes. In our amendment, we have outlined how we will more than double the round five hundred budget and create more retraining opportunities for the towns unemployed. With management costs and costs of councillors, particularly cabinet members, we believe that we can make savings that won't affect the council's performance but can be used to protect transport services to the elderly and the disabled. We will do this by retaining the existing level of subsidy to dial-a-ride and by retaining the level of subsidy to Swindon's bus services. This proposal will have a real impact on people's lives and contributes to what this administration says is one of its key goals, independent living for all and reduced isolation. By cutting the dial-a-ride service and the council's bus subsidy, this council will take a step back before it achieves these goals and that's why we are proposing to save these services. If Labour were in administration, we would end the consultant's first approach adopted by this council. Labour would end the encouragement of council staff to use outside consultants and we would seek instead to prioritise wherever possible council services over council taxpayers or wherever possible council services to Swindon's council taxpayers. And that's why our amendment proposes significant additional investment in the pothole budget, which I know will be welcomed by local residents. To summarise the Labour position, Labour have produced this amendment in the spirit of making a difference through realistic and achievable policies that will ensure Swindon Borough Council is on the side of a local council taxpayer, on the side of the elderly, on the side of the disabled and younger people. Swindon residents should be in no doubt that a Labour administration would not continue the consultant-first policy of this administration, the expensive Swindon taxpayers. We would not spend so much money on forward Swindon bureaucracy but rather invest that money in apprenticeships and the retraining opportunities and we would cut, while we would cut management costs and councillor costs in order to save the bus service of this town. For these reasons, I urge all councillors in this room to support the Labour amendment. Thank you.
Second up? I need an injury, Mr Mayor. Anybody wish to speak of a member? Councilor Page here.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The amendment is actually a very good one. It actually is a thought-through amendment, which I think is always very positive. And some of the themes you worked on, I think, will actually deserve support, particularly such aspects of dial-a-ride and various aspects like that as well. What has to say, I mean, I totally agree with the idea this is a challenging budget in the challenging times. And then Eric Pickles, who's no hero of local governments, made the point in his speech who proposed a local government finance, they committed local authorities have protected local services. And I believe this authority has protected local services as much as possible within the fentic hands. So I believe we are doing that. He also made the point all councils have a moral duty to freeze council tax. I think it's more than a moral duty in the sense it's almost a direct bribe in the sense that if we have a zero council tax, we receive a one percent increase in our funding. However, if we go over two per cent, we'd have to go to a referendum on the costs of that. So I think it's a bit more than moral duty, actually we're almost actually chained to do it. But actually what you have to do is work within our own resources. And it's very clear that actually the demands are increasing all the time. We all know those demands in terms of social care, in terms of demanding budget, in terms of demands by people. So I can understand the amendment. And obviously our amendments actually do figure into that as well. We will actually go for our always the best thing we always had, to give more power to local people through the idea actually keeping the localities correctly fronted and actually led correctly by seven localities with several leads. So that'll be our elements of that. But going to this amendment, I think there is a lot to support in it. The idea of a cross-party working party on debt. Again, worthy of support. The idea that I think the leader actually made the point about one Swindon, the idea of working together. In difficult times, you do share a partnership. And I think that, again, is something we would support. And I think we all would actually join in with that. In truth, actually when it comes to budget, you often tinkle on the edges because most of this is actually we have no control over the statutory need and they must be addressed. So these amendments are actually all on the side and our amendments too are actually on the side there. So we are playing very little. But actually, I appreciate the Labour amendments and actually do actually see it. Its benefits, dial-a-ride, always been the champion of dial-a-ride and again, I would support it. The idea of a pothole budget, something we all look into.
And looking to potholes.
Yeah. But again, it's actually fixing a demand thereby, people have something to do with actually the roads. And we all complain that it's due to the hard winters that we had, followed by rain. We had actually just a climate disaster in our country. So there is lots of things to be there. So that's called climate amendment and that's probably worthy of support. I will speak more actually with my own amendment, which I hope will get widespread because they are very close. And obviously one of them has all been addressed by the Conservatives on the night. I think it's close to our heart as well and actually has been recognised, I do appreciate. So I'll speak later, but I do appreciate all the points made in the Labour amendment.
Commissioner Terence here.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's a very somber, I think, and low-key speech by councillor Edwards at the start of this debate. I think that that was a recognition of the pain that this budget will create. And I think there are choices and that's where our budget amendment comes in. I think for me, the budget shows here in Swindon, the local face of seeing how the Tories' national economic strategy is hurting but not working. And it's those people that are being affected by this budget, the families, the workers, the pensioners, that are going to feel that the Tory cuts are hurting. With families feeling it hurts, the two hundred thousand pound cut to the children's centres, workers with over a hundred jobs set to go in the council, the olds with a million cut from care for the elderly and bus users with the two hundred thousand pound cut for bus services across Swindon. While of course, as councillor Grant has mentioned, nationally millionaires get a bonus of a hundred thousand pounds this April. These cuts are a direct result of that national decision. So you can groan, but these cuts are a direct result of that national decision, which can see local government funding cut by twenty-eight per cent, meaning millions cut from the budget here in Swindon. But the problem is it's not working. So we've got all of this pain, but it's not working. Growth is down, debt is rising and the cuts are continuing. All the pain, but absolutely no gain. Businesses, economists, now the INF, are all saying the same as Labour Party nationally. It's not working, it's time for change of direction. And we're seeing that damage here visibly in Swindon. Eight thousand people now out of work, youth unemployment at chronic levels, businesses closing and laying off workers, empty shops on our High Street with HMV announcing its closure this week. I think people are feeling a real sense, a real sense of hopelessness, that things are getting worse and worse and that the government is doing nothing, standing by and doing nothing to help. Now, there are already some people in this room that try and play these cuts on someone else. I look towards councillor Bolton, this normal speech on this particular topic. This wasn't the fault of the last Labour, this was the fault of the last Labour government, not at all the fault of the bank. So I thought I would perhaps preempt on this occasion and look at the facts. Because I think it's important to look at the facts. Fact number one, nineteen ninety-seven, our debt was forty-two per cent of GDP. That's the debt that we inherited from the last Conservative government. Before the banking collapse, under Labour, it had gone down, not up, down to thirty-five per cent. And now, after two and a half years of your administration, of your government, it's now at seventy per cent. So that's fact number one. Fact number two, George Osborne backed Labour's spending plans. In two thousand and seven, these were the very worst that George Osborne said, very proudly at the time. Today, I can confirm for the first time, the first time, that a Conservative government would adopt Labour's spending totals. George Osborne, two thousand and seven. Fact number three, they opposed regulating the banks. Again, in two thousand and seven, Conservative Party policy documents, a Conservative government should relax banking regulation, it said. The Labour government claims that this regulation is all necessary. They seem to believe that without it, banks could steal our money. Very, very, very prescient words, were they? Very prescient words the Conservative Party said, banks could steal our money, let's not regulate them. So I don't think that councillor Bolton's normal speech is particularly appropriate to not be. Instead of blaming someone else, I think we need the real action to rebuild Britain, rebuild Swindon's economy. And that's where our amendments come on, which propose a Plan B for Swindon to build the new businesses, the new jobs and the new economy that our town needs. And it seems to be our Labour group that leads the debate on this. Council recall that it was Labour that proposed an economic strategy to get Swindon working, opposed by the Tories in this chamber, but after businesses backed us, not them, they followed our policy. Council also recalled that it was Labour that proposed a regeneration master plan to breathe new life into our town centre. Again, opposed by the leader of the council in this chamber, but after businesses backed us, not them, they followed our policy. But it's Labour again tonight. It's Labour again tonight that's calling for real action to rebuild our economy. I think, Mr Mayor, people are looking for hope, for the prospect that things are going to get better and the real change to rebuild our economy. So let the message go out, instead of these cut cuts, Labour will take the real action to help those most in need and kick-start Swindon's economy. That's the real change that this town needs. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Some of the issues that cover me tonight affect me emotionally. When it was first proposed to tackle threshold, it sort of got under my skin. And it got under my skin because the way I am is to think about others and their needs. But to be told that I agree with ninety-nine per cent of this budget when I haven't even spoken to the person who declared that, I think is rather unfair. Labour group have got a proposal forward that doesn't agree with ninety-nine per cent. You just can't separate it off like that and say we agree with you. And we do have our own proposals, but I would say to you, I don't agree with a single cut that you're proposing. Not a single cut, if it stifles growth and development and improved services. Now, think about those words, if it stifles cuts and development. Because it's no point in just cutting things if we're not going to develop the Swindon that we want. Is it a budget set through Westminster? You're sat in this seat, but it's a budget set through. You're sat in this seat, but it's a budget set through Westminster. The funding, the late arrival of the details, all came from your Conservative coalition in London. So the next time you make a case against Europe, just take a look over your shoulder at what's happening in local government. Because you are now suffering the very things that people who have anti-Europe feelings are suffering in this council. More to the point, I've spoken to lots of you, and not one of you has spoken well about Mr Pickles. Not one of you has spoken well about Mr Pickles. But not one of you has got the courage to stand up and say you don't like the cuts up Mr Pickles is bringing to this council. You'll all sit there and you'll back Parliament and you'll back every single decision that's being made, because that's what you do. And it's our job to bring it to book. It's our job to point out to you there are different ways. If you have got the courage tonight, please stand up, but I don't think you will. We have a zero growth policy in this country at the moment. We are not going to accept that in the Labour group here. We will be talking to you. That's why we've got proposals to work with you to reduce the debts. But we're not just going to look at banks, and we're not just going to look at the rich that are buying in Swindon's properties to turn into multiple occupancy homes. We're not going to be looking at that. We're going to be looking at the things that you've already done, the decisions you've made. And you've made a decision. £15 million worth of debt, and what do we do? We build a £15 million car park that we don't need. That's why I'm against the cuts, because you are making decisions that we don't need. We've been told we have a surplus of 1,300 car parking spaces. We've been told now that this cost of run in this car park each day is going to be close to £800 a day. You look at the cost, £100,000 a year to run that car park. We've got plenty of spare car parks. These are the facts, these are the figures that are out there. So those are the kinds of decisions you're making at this moment. Now, you've justified that as some kind of policy that needed to be made. Well, of course it did. That fiasco at Whale Bridge had to have some justification, because the nonsense of what's happening in this town, forcing drivers away from the town centre, no wonder we've got shortages of income from car parking, because they're going to go to places where it's free or easy to park. So that's a decision you've made. But stick to national decisions that's giving you the uncertainty. And why I say uncertainty, because that's what your report says. Uncertainty. Well, the effect of the welfare reforms and bedroom tax, you know about, and you don't have the answers. You know 60% of this town want single-bedroom homes and we don't have that. That's on our 15,000 waiting list. Let alone those people you're expecting to move sideways now. They either pay the difference, which they don't have the money for, or they sit until they're evicted, because we don't have the properties to move. Those are the welfare reforms. And I get this nonsense about some kind of contingency. Absolute peanuts, and you know it's peanuts, but this is the kind of thing you'll bring into this council.
Thirty seconds, councillor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I've got to chortle this one head, got to make it positive. 20% of the costs that come to this council are from a very limited group of people. They're the ones that are okay. 80% come from those who are not okay. We've got to make our policies work for them. Look like the Lye project into the homeless, look into the welfare, that's where your savings are. They're the hidden costs in leasing, in hospitals, in subsidy support. Get the same project, not the Lye project, going there.
Thank you, councillor Blue.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm going to resist the urge to say I've heard it before. Very measured from councillor Grant, but we're all talking about Alice in Wonderland and needed to mark and to bollock aside into Alice and into the man Catter. Because...
Mr Mayor, is there any need for insult?
No, but frankly, it's not an insult. The Alice in Wonderland quote was about Eunice saying that we want to increase jobs, increase pay, and don't cut services. When Eunice tell me how you do that with increased demand and declining budgets, then we'll sit down and have the debate. Chancellor, would-be chancellor Ed Balls, who cuts nothing and spends everything we haven't got, hasn't got the answers either. Unfortunately, that sort of persists with the Labour group here as well, because they won't acknowledge that there are any issues out there. We've heard it here tonight, no cuts would be made, and, you know, we'd go on as normal. Councillor Dempsey, I'm not sure people are talking about the council. All of it is just soapbox to be an MP, because it's only more about the economy and it's more about Swindon. Totally overlooks the fact that unemployment has been falling every month over the last year, not in Swindon admittedly, sadly. January was not a good month for Swindon. But there are signs that the economy is higgling. Yes, there isn't growth yet. We are overburdened with debt, both publicly and privately. And whilst that continues, growth will be very difficult to find, particularly with European situations. So I'm not going to dwell on that. You can just shoot coach and horses to relieve everything you said. As far as councillor Wright is concerned, if he still doesn't get the need for the car park, and perhaps he'd like to go on a training course about economic development and regeneration, because it was absolutely vital as part of regeneration that the car park wanted to go ahead. If councillor Wright is going to stand up and tell us we've got all the car parks we need, all the car parks we need, when most of them aren't fit for purpose and out of date, then he's missing the point as well. There is a reason behind all of these things, and you can manufacture the headlines as much as you like, but it doesn't make the facts any different. I'm not going to say too much more, because frankly, this is a responsible budget and this is meeting most of the competing demands and priorities. If the country doesn't have the money, you can't protect everybody, and it doesn't matter which party's in control, that will be a fact. Given that most public spending goes on those most in need, they are always going to be the ones that suffer the most, and that's why we all need to grow up and find solutions to the problem. Because we don't want to see anybody suffering anymore, and it's absolutely necessary. And none of people, and every family in this country is suffering in one way or another. Not many people were part of the problem, but they have got to be part of the solution, and that is just a growing fact of life. The issues on Dala Rye and bus subsidies, I'll leave my colleague to deal with. As for the Labour amendment, well, you know, it's a good try, and you know, you can't argue it was a good debating point, but it's all about headlines, and it always is all about headlines, because it always goes for the headlines and ones that are going to make the best headlines. The Forward Swindon cut, frankly, would be the most irresponsible thing you could ever do. Because if you don't understand what Forward Swindon is doing within with investment on a daily basis right at the moment, I suggest you find out, because they are preserving jobs in Swindon every day. And they're actually doing quite a lot of good work at the moment in bringing jobs to Swindon. Go and take the money out, just at the time when business rates is coming back to some localisation of business rates, and see what we put at risk. It's just nonsense. It would be irresponsible. Management savings, well, that makes a good headline, doesn't it? They know that the top management has been heavily streamlined. We still have to run a council, and without senior management, we will be back in the bad old days of needing government assistance to help us through it. You know, communications budget, another good headline. There's still a lot of work going on in there that would be really damaging to lose. My colleague will talk about insult. They want to cut the entire trading budget. This is still a very narrow organisation with very important needs out there. Are you really suggesting that we, as a council, should not train anybody ever again on anything? Or do you think that would be healthy for the council?
Thirty seconds.
If you're going to talk about £148 million budget and get down to bottom water, as I've said, we've seen so far, we're really all scratching around for something to say. So, you know, let's have the debate on it, but quite frankly, it doesn't hold a lot of water. It wouldn't be a responsible budget. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Volker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, you've hardly, Labour leader outlined the reasons why we feel that the budget proposed by the Conservative administration isn't appropriate, and it isn't based on the values of preserving services for the Most Wonderful within our community. Although councillor Edwards, on a number of occasions, has started to use the words about protecting Most Wonderful within our communities. I think we need to examine the difference in the values between Labour and Conservative, and the reasons why we're making the points within this chamber. We believe passionately you're hitting Most Wonderful within our community, and ensuring that the privileged fuel position is maintained within this power. There is a wide range of issues that lead us to believe that this is a fact, although the leader dispenses by personal attacks on individuals. You can even attack me as well now, I'm used to it. It is a situation that's evolved over a period of time. Let's deal with a few of these points. On community development, you can track Forward Swindon Company as a panacea of resolving the issues of development and the regeneration of it. We wouldn't argue that there wouldn't be a need for some organisation to deal with this, but we believe that at times, when every penny counts, that the business should be brought back within the council and maybe led by yourself, councillor Mark Edwards, and the chief executive, to lead this position with professional officers reducing those particular costs. On the question of the library service, I welcome some of the comments that you've given a further period to review it and save on it. That on surface might seem, you know, a sign of victory on it. I don't personally see that. Not because I don't welcome the fact that reducing the ask from 37 to 10, it saves the position of those libraries from closing at some future stage. The opportunity to discuss a business plan, which I've tabled in the past, of how the library service can be delivered in a different form, which was to a great extent accepted by officers and by yourself on this situation, and it wasn't developed all the way through, where possibly we could have got the savings down without impacting on levels of service to other areas like wardrobes and other things that are badly near within the community. Let me then move on to the issue of localities. It was a fanfare of a big idea of the leader, saying where, as the canals were in other areas, that he announced that these officers, right, the localities, were set up to deliver services that the council would normally do, reducing council's costs. And we all bought into it. Why? Because the leader said so, and there must have been a business plan for it. And what do we see? From £800,000 less than a year, you've decided, right, to reduce that budget by £400,000. Now, on the surface, we can say that's another victory. Is it really a victory? If we didn't find the need to reduce that particular budget, you know, this year, we found the need to reduce the budget, why the hell did we do it just under 12 months ago? It is irresponsible the way we've handled that situation, and there's a lot to be answered. Normally, because of the impact on a lot of our staff, it's not the right way to manage the organisation. You spend £1.8 million here at consultants. You could do this every time we raise it. That's what...
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Right, Mr Mayor. I've certainly been thrown on this by the time factor on this. I think the car parks in itself, you know, councillor Wright's made a point on car parks. We build a new car park at a point where you can afford to do it, another £15 million, when you look at the fatwa that it won't bring one additional penny of revenue back into this council, and it won't accommodate any other council.
Time to the council, thank you.
I'll sit down, I'll go ahead before you move your head.
Councillor Pagey.
Thank you. Listen to councillor Grant, councillor Dempsey, and councillor Wright. Did you think for great economic development, growth and development, investment in the town? Those words I totally agree with. I don't disagree with what you want, the same way we want. It's how you actually get there, right? You've got to make £100,000 in your budget amendment for training. Training, time and time again, has supported motions in this chamber regarding partnerships, and real training for real jobs, time and time again. But we've seen over the recent years, many, many training schemes, which lead to training schemes, and training schemes, and training schemes, but not real jobs. We need the jobs that people are actually trained into. At the moment, that's where the money should be spent, that's where the budget needs to be centred on, rather than to destroy the one area which actually can create economic regeneration for the town, and that's Forward Swindon. At the moment, Forward Swindon is taking on the work that was carried out by the Boris Regeneration Economic Department and the New Swindon Company. Their budget was £860,000 on it. And the work that Forward Swindon, this year, it's £1.50, as we see, right? It's creating more movement, more forward economic growth this town than in previous years. You say it's out of what, it's like testimonials here for the leading companies in this town, right? The people actually employ and create the jobs for the town. Got Nationwide, Honda, Chur, BBC, the National Self-Board, and many other companies, which applaud, right, what's Forward Swindon is doing, support them to maintain existing jobs, and it is economic time, it's maintaining jobs and promoting work, and growing new jobs, and helping the companies to survive. And Forward Swindon, time and time again, it's not that the headlines on local paper only are set, but they're working there to actually drive forward the economics development in this town. And in there, they're actually creating jobs nationwide, they're moving here, they're setting up the work Forward Swindon is assisting with. Forward Swindon now is working with the top 100 companies in Swindon at the moment, right, to ensure that they have very good relationships with the council. The council can actually work to help them to achieve economic success. Taking £200,000 out of that budget, it can destroy them, destroy Forward Swindon, right? No, I said another £200,000. Okay? Now, councillor Dempsey, councillor Dempsey, I fully understand what they're doing, right? They want to close Forward Swindon down because that's not good policy. They know by taking more and more money out of it, they're making them an impossible job to continue. As members of the Forward Swindon Commissioning Board, time and time again, they tell the chairman of the board, "We support Forward Swindon. We support what they're worth, what they're doing, and all the rest of it." And then they go along, bring along a motion tonight to destroy the one hope of many of the workers of this town to have jobs, right? You talk about one time back how badly the economic situation affecting the workers of the town is, very badly. Right, we have Honda with their jobs, which have been lost recently. Remember this, that in public, Labour stood up and supported, right? The Honda talks on job process. And who has actually pushed that forward? Who set up the task group? Who chairs the task group? Who ensures that in fact those people who are, well, we're looking for jobs, actually are helped into jobs? That's Forward Swindon. It even says that in the address, it must be right.
You might get a fair amount of everything, the liberals will not get taken.
So the whole point actually is that, yes, it's all about moving money for the departments which are actually creating proper jobs for future Swindon, maintaining proper jobs.
Thirty seconds, councillor.
Right? But it's certainly just sticking in training for jobs which don't exist, right? So what you talk about just doesn't stand up against what you're saying budget.
Thank you, councillor Volker.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Can I first of all congratulate my cheerleader, Mark Dempsey, and welcome you to the council. Thank you very much, Mark. Can I really start by saying that...
Can I really start by saying that I will continue on every occasion to remind this chamber of the disastrous legacy which the Labour Party left in 2010? I think, Mr Mayor, it's summed up perfectly by the outgoing number two in the Treasury, who left a note saying, sorry, old boy, I've spent all the money. Remember that, spent all the money. I could exchange quotes about, Mr Brown said this and Mr so and so said that and it doesn't get us anywhere. At the end of the day, the Labour Party left an absolute disaster. We have to accept that.
No, I know.
Well, if you are not, if you are in denial, Mr Mayor, or they are in denial, Mr Mayor, then they must show them that they do not live in the real world, the real world we all know.
We just have a little view of it.
I shouldn't interrupt you, you're just up in your own way. Please have a laugh. Can I now move on, because I think it's important? I've had two very unfortunate periods in this council where I was totally disturbed. One was in the early 2001, 2002, when Swindon was named as one of the worst 14 countries. I have to blame the Labour Party, so don't react before I blame you. I found that very difficult. I found the position we're in now very difficult. Regardless of whether we're Labour, Liberal or Conservatives, this council, like local government across the country, is in a terribly difficult position. We have got to work together to get out of this hole. And I welcome the Labour leader's comment that we will be prepared to work with the Conservatives and the Liberal. I think that's a great step forward. But we have got to be quite realistic. Mr Pickles, in my opinion, and this might surprise the councillor, has been one of the most disastrous secretary of state for local government. But it's a close run rate...
Is that a shot of whiskey?
It's a close run rate between Josh Heston here. And we on this side of the chamber, probably speaking, it's very close. But we are where we are and we've got to get ourselves out of this hole. I'm an expansionist. Those people who have known me over the years know very well, I believe, economic growth, building of housing, building of jobs, et cetera, et cetera. So we've got to move forward on that. I am very concerned that that the economy nationally, because to give us a gentleman's little signal, it's all like that. We know it's like that. If you look at the German economy, it's shrunk 0.6 in the last quarter. Now, the Germans are in trouble, we're all in trouble. But we've got to work, and I agree totally with what Gary Perkins was making, we need Forward Swindon, we need every opportunity to continue to push Swindon as one of the most important economic growth areas of the United Kingdom, and it's been so for 60 years. Swindon is a strategic growth area and we should be saying, all three political parties, two of our members of Parliament, regardless of their colour, Swindon is a growth area. If the United Kingdom is going to get out of a hole, then places like Swindon are going to have to deliver the goods. So I think tonight what we've got to remember, this is a pantomime, it always is, Mr Mayor, we all keep it around and we all enjoy it. Tomorrow is when the challenge really starts. We need to work together to get the best job possible for Swindon. We need to put our political beliefs away and concentrate...
Twenty five seconds.
Thank you very much. On concentrating, doing the best job for Swindon possible. We on this side of the chamber, and you guys have already said certainly some of these, when your government's in power, you have to carry that. And I said to you when you had the Labour Party in power and after that, can I say that the load of carrying the present government is the role of the council?
Thank you, councillor Wright.